Who has won the efficiency award of the town of Peterborough for the briefest selectmen's meeting held on January, July 1st, 2025, two minutes and 17 seconds. Congratulations Chairman Ward.
I'd like to thank everyone for being at that meeting briefly.
I was hoping you'd make the speech longer than the meeting.
Do I have to bring this every meeting up?
You don't have to.
It's up to you.
What happens if he beats the record? Does he get another one?
Another, I don't know, we'll have to ask Tim Matt, Tim Brezovic actually did the work on getting that put together.
Very sweet.
The light's on.
Excellent, we are on air. So today's October 7th, it's the first time I've gotten an award with such, okay, so tonight's meeting is, you threw me off here now. I'm Tyler Ward, award winner. Bill Kennedy, fellow select board members, Nicole McStay, our town administrator, and Justine Hanson, our assistant to the town administrator. And tonight's meeting, we have appointments. Danica Moore will open a review, consideration and propose civil rights policy, that's standard thing that we kind of review all the time. Updates to downtown visioning, that's interesting. Update on the Invest New Hampshire grant program, I know people are wondering what's going on there. Preparing for a DOT roadway improvement task force. And then announcement of the NECAPA project of the year award. Dedication of the town piano, does everybody know about the piano that was refurbished upstairs? That's pretty exciting. Barn preservation easement, this is one of the things that this is like, one of our tasks is to see about tax incentives for barn preservation and we got to visit a lovely barn up on Middle Hancock Road. And then we'll have some appointments to inclusivity committee, inclusive community committee, affordable housing committee and conservation commission. We'll review improvements from August 5th and then Nicole will bring us up to speed on the school healthcare coalition contribution assessment. We are on air, as you can see there, Tim Brezovic's behind the scene capturing this, archiving this video for future viewing and so if anybody has anything they'd like to ask or add, just raise your hand or call in yet and just state your name for the minutes and the record. Okay, first, Danica, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, so the first on the agenda is the Title VI policy. So this is a policy that's required specifically when it comes to some of our grants that we get for federal funding, so it's really important that we make sure that it's continually up to date. What's fantastic is that DOT put together a template for us to make sure that however we update our policy and plan meets what their gold standard is. I, over the past couple of months, worked on putting together the policy and plan. It is highly more or less the same of what the templates were that was given to us, but it did incorporate some research. So for instance, we look at census data of populations in Peterborough that speak alternative languages. If there is a certain threshold or percentage of our total population that is speaking another language primarily, then there are certain additional steps that the town needs to take. What we learned through our census data is that we do not meet that threshold. So on one hand, we know that we don't meet that threshold, however, through this update, we also documented some of the steps that the town has taken in order to make sure that we can communicate with those parties when we do come in contact with them. The most common is the police department, which we learned that they have inter-municipal agreements with the Mayor Mack Police Department, they have someone on staff who is fluent in Spanish. So that's their most common language group that they come in contact with, they often work with them. They also have other tools that they can use such as agreements with the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Department. So there's some updates on statistics in there. It's a policy and plan that we would have in place and it would name Nicole as the Title VI administrator, meaning that, coordinator, meaning that if there was ever a complaint, that complaint would be filed through her and she would have the appropriate avenues to have it addressed. That kind of encapsulated, encapsulates it at a high level though.
It's quite the document.
Holy cow.
Have we ever had a Title VI complaint?
Yes.
Oh yeah?
Yes.
The nature of?
It was an allegation of a violation of civil rights against a police officer a number of years, a few years ago. It was referred to the Attorney General's Office for Investigation and found to be without merit.
Suspected. Do we need to vote on?
I just had a few, just a few comments. Thank you so much. That was a lot. So I appreciate it. I just have a few little grammatical things.
Sure.
I don't have to go through them here, just sometimes it was B six, sometimes it was B four.
Okay.
So I will send those to you.
Thank you.
On page four, under procedure, it talks about an appeal, but I wasn't sure it was clear about how one might appeal, how they would go about appealing. So I hope that can be clarified.
Yeah.
On the organizational staffing and structure, it talks about the department heads being responsible for making sure the departments are following the Title VI with respect to initiatives, projects, documents. I thought it might be also good to add that they're responsible for making sure that they do training, to make sure they understand that they need to, what their employees need to be doing to follow Title VI.
I can certainly have that.
That would be great. And then the only other thing I had was for limited English proficiency, which you had just mentioned, and I did see where you talked about the percent and not meeting the threshold. Only thing, and I saw about the police, the only, this is a very small point, but the only thing I thought about for consideration is that Google Translate is also mentioned for both translation and interpretation. It's, it's pretty good for word to word translation and even in the interpretation mode, it does word for word. So it misses context, situation nuances, so it may not, the need may not occur within a police situation, even though mostly it does. So my only recommendation is that we look into just being aware of services that are available, that we just have on record, so that if we needed to quickly reach out, we would be scammed.
Yeah, we certainly do. So Google Translate is something DOT recommends having in because it's kind of just a quick go-to that you can have on your phone.
Yeah.
I couldn't speak to the administration department, but at least for the office of planning and building, we have had to reach out to a few, just to have on standby for certain parties. We didn't list them in there only because they're not people that we have under contract.
Yep.
They're just people or other organizations that we know of that if we needed to tap into them, they're available.
Yeah, yeah, that's really what I'm referring to. And, and you wouldn't necessarily have to put that in there, or you could just say we have, you know, sort of knowledge of services we could tap into if needed without listing who they are.
Yeah, I can, I can certainly have that on.
Okay.
With respect to training, I would not want to have a separate training course for Title VI, it ought to be integrated with all of our other training that goes on in the various departments. So maybe if you just simply identified, maybe this can be inserted into that program.
Okay.
I mean, do you think the document speaks to training?
It does speak to training, there's a whole section on it. And different departments handle their training differently. Police drivers have their own module that they do.
Sure, right.
It's in compliance with state and federal requirements for police officers. There's another module that the fire department has, you know, for its staff. So there's, there's different things available for different groups.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Can I have a quick question to add around what Bonnie was asking about? Jerichism. Is there any kind of like prioritization matrix for where like Google Translate is not a first resort, it's more of a, it's an emergency where you don't have time to get someone else? Or do you have a situation where it's, you have time to get a more proficient resource than Google Translate? I'm curious if there's, and it talks about as far as Google Translate not necessarily being your first and that's absolutely necessary.
Yeah, so we didn't talk about it in the plan, we just listed kind of a few that we have available that we need to use. I think that would be department by department, specifically just because all of the case by case scenarios are so different, but it certainly may be something that we could add in or do in a later iteration of what departments have as they're prioritized.
I think maybe most is from a first responder standpoint is where the.
Yeah.
Anything else, anyone else? So do we need to vote on approving this?
Yeah, acceptance, acceptance was amended.
I, I move to approve the Title VI civil rights policy.
I second.
Excellent. Anything else? Anybody in favor?
Yeah, make sure they're all.
Yeah, we want to make sure it's up to date so we can keep getting.
I'm going to just agree.
I know, it's not, it's not the most interesting document, but it was fun to, I like statistics, so it was fun pulling the census data and kind of understanding.
It was interesting.
And we surveyed all the departments too that are mostly public facing to understand, you know, what's your, what are your interaction in the past year for getting language groups.
Has written any indication that that program or funding is at all jeopardy given?
It's, so for any grant that we get that's federally funded, we have to have that policy in place and updated. And so specifically when it comes to DOT funds, which our director of public works has thankfully been able to get pretty frequently, it's really important that DOT sees that we have that updated policy. So it actually all came through DOT that he wanted, DOT wanted to make sure that we had an updated policy in place so that we could continue getting those funds.
We have to go with the grants right now, so we have a Department of Energy grant that you guys have been working on. We have an EPA grant that Seth and I are still trying to get, that all of them require having this policy in place. So we've gotten waivers in the past for not having an updated policy, but they all require that we put the policy, the town have a policy updated within six months. So we're, we're well ahead of that deadline.
So hopefully the funding stays.
Yeah, that's, yeah. I get the need for the policy, I was just more curious about.
Yeah, not an immediate threat.
Okay.
It's not an immediate threat, but we definitely need to just get this done.
Yeah.
All right, downtown visioning or?
So, yeah, not a ton to update, but we are getting prepared to, Seth is going to be doing some paving work in the downtown this coming fiscal year, not the one that we're in currently, but in FY '27. That would consist of Grove and Main Street and that's going to lend the opportunity to us to be able to do some of those visioning improvements, which included taking away a little bit of pavement and being able to add some green space, making that crosswalk that's at the Depot Street across Main Street to Summer Street, being able to realign that and make that intersection safer to pedestrians, and adding a little bit of green space in that area as well, kind of in front of Roy's. So we're really excited to be able to kind of start doing that work and continue to that side of town. I know Tricia's working with the Greater Downtown Tiff to get a meeting scheduled later this year so that they can start talking about what the plan is for how we roll that out. And we have been kind of looking at grants through the Mananac Alliance for Sustainable Transportation to be able to take some of those funds to offset the costs for implementing those improvements. So we're excited to get that underway.
So we're looking at improving out in front of Maggie's and Roy's.
So specifically where you're on Depot Street facing across from Summer Street, as a car, it's very difficult to see right or left beyond cars. It's actually a pretty unsafe intersection right there for vehicles, but especially for pedestrians who are either crossing across Depot Street or going across Main Street. So the treatment that was proposed by the engineers was to add bump outs on either side so that cars can safely approach past the parked cars, but also realigning that sidewalk so it's straight and it's a shorter sidewalk, you should really make sidewalks as short as possible. A part of having that bump out specifically in front of Roy's was to take away one parking space. That would give us the ability to add some variable shrubs, but also potential for say a bench for Roy's patrons. So at the time when we had discussed it, it sounded like the owners of Roy's were in favor of being able to say, you know, encourage their patrons to go out front and eat a sandwich. So we're excited to see that move forward and make that a safer area.
So you've been working with Brad and Chris.
Yeah, so Brad and Chris actually came to the last Greater Downtown Tiff meeting, actually.
Right, right.
They're not officially, yeah, so they're not officially members, but with consideration to their overall renovation projects for Roy's, Little Roy's and Maggie's, I think they're excited to see some other pieces to that section of town.
Yeah, that really needs attention, I've been asking for that for several years. Matt, are we going to be using GD Tiff funds for this?
Uh, yes, for the, for the, all of it, we've been budgeting for the paving and for the downtown visioning improvements. We have the funding available to be able to do it in that fiscal year, but we're hoping that we'd be able to tap into some grant money to help offset a little bit. So we won't know about whether or not we can tap into that until next year.
May I say something? Yes, Cynthia Maron, I want to thank you for that because as a cyclist also, that intersection's very dangerous. It's confusing for cars that are coming off of 202 and up, and they see me and they don't know whether they're going to stop or if it's to go. So it's very like, you have, you have to like, you take your life into your own hands for like 10 seconds when you're going to be able to cross the street. So I really appreciate that.
I feel like just being in a car, I can imagine being on a bicycle.
Yeah, it's not fun to take a pic.
No, it's long overdue, so we're really excited.
These plans have been developing over a couple of years now, so.
Invest New Hampshire.
So I was hoping to have more of an update on this. So two weeks ago, New Hampshire Housing announced that they have Invest NH 2.0, which was a $7 million pot of funding open to any developer and that developer could quite literally be a homeowner looking to build on a piece of property and rent it out. It covered things like doing fire suppression systems, which we know sprinklering a building can be very expensive. It covered things like engineering costs, surveying, so we hit the ground running and we were reaching out to landlords and other property owners to see if they wanted to work on it. Unfortunately, New Hampshire Housing announced that people are grabbing at the money so quickly that they set the deadline to Friday of this week as the final date to apply.
I'm sure we should.
So I don't think we will be back in front of you to actually ask for funds in time. We didn't have any applicants who were able to actually get all of the hard costs estimated, but we're hopeful that that could be something coming down the pike, especially when it comes to fire suppression systems with our older buildings in the downtown. That could be a huge incentive for some of our property owners. So we had a few people who were looking at it, but we're disappointed with the change in deadline. Preparing for a DOT roadway improvement task force. So this is something Tricia and I have talked about for quite some time, and Tricia had talked about wanting to spearhead. We've not formalized a mission and goals for it, but we thought it might be nice to just share with the board what the intention of it is. Since I've been with the town almost six years, I have heard of all of the same spots on state owned roads that people really want transportation improvements. The difficulty is that when things come to the planning board and we have an opportunity for something to be paid for, it's a lot of work on my end to say, go to DOT, show that there's community support, figure out what the town needs to do in terms of, is it an easement, is it a memorandum of understanding, and also figure out how much it is. So the thought was coming up with a game plan for each of these areas and having, really leveraging this task force to gather that community support, show DOT that there is community support for these areas and understanding what it is that we need for each of those areas, so that if we do have something come through like Bose Farm Road, which really could have benefited from a crosswalk in that area, we're ready to go, to go to DOT and say, we have the support, we have the buy-in, we know that you need an easement or an MOU or whatever, and we know what the cost is and we're ready to foot it.
That's great.
So at some point, I don't know if you want to add anything, but at some point Tricia wants to put together the mission and goals for that and present it to you guys.
Okay.
We have a handful of people in mind. There's a handful of residents who have expressed a lot of, well, a lot of interest in having some type of a transportation task force. We wanted it to be specific to what we know, we really, it's low hanging fruit, honestly. And we know that if we have people who can just help us kind of get to the final step, when something comes in front of the planning board, we have the ability to ask for the developer to pay for these improvements as dreaming that the town will pay for it, we can leverage that through the planning board process, so.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you very much for doing it. I know a lot of residents are really concerned about some of these areas and the safety, especially on 202 and the cost of the schools, and it would get even more challenging for those farm residents. And I am aware of people who would like to support you, and I do think that's what you need, because both of you are very, very busy.
Yeah.
So I really look forward to having you bring it forward for people.
Yeah, Tricia has a great background in transportation planning, so I think she'll be great for it.
It's important.
And that's, that seems to be the pattern here, like the affordable housing committee gets together, citizens concerned about things, the community committee gets together, you know, concerned about things, and then this next, you know, people are in this community that see things, they want to better our community and they volunteer their time, precious time. So that's great. Yeah, thanks. And then NECAPA project of the year.
Yes.
I thought that's what this was.
I did too.
I did too, yeah.
No, I know, I actually, I saw Tim Brezovic constructing that himself in the opposite place. I believe it's reclaimed to some.
Stars.
It was well recycled, just.
Well recycled, yeah.
Upcycled.
Yeah.
Reused, yes.
So NECAPA stands for the Northern New England Chapter of the American Planning Association. And Tricia and I had nominated the Envision Town Student Challenge for Affordable Housing, which was a project put on through the Affordable Housing Committee this past late spring. We are thrilled to announce that that project has been awarded as project of the year for 2025, which means we will accept the award at the NECAPA conference in Portland in November.
Portland, Maine?
Portland, Maine.
That was Keene State, right?
It was.
With the Keene State Architecture Department.
Yeah, so to kind of give a really quick overview of what that project was, we had taken a handful of properties in town which were underutilized or undeveloped altogether, but had really great bones to what could be developed there, and we partnered with Keene State students, architecture students, who created renderings of what could be on those properties, but they really actually read our master plan and based their renderings on the town's master plan, on the wants and needs of the community. We then had developers come to a presentation to see those renderings, and what was really exciting about it is every single one of those projects was pursued to some degree by either the property owners or other developers or what have you. So there's no formal movement on any right now, but we're, we're hopeful that it's incentivized some action.
Yeah, the way I put it is, you know, developers can be creative and sometimes they're not. And sometimes they need a little help. And that was really the thrust of it, was to really come up with these properties, as you say, Danica, and we prioritized the ones that were really close in, walkable, where we're not destroying any natural resources. And it turned out that these pockets of land, a lot of people didn't even know they existed. So, and then the other thing I just want to share is that, and two things actually, one is that this was a partnership with the Architecture Department of the university. So we, and we had very positive experiences with them. So we now have this strong partnership with them to continue the work. And the students, not only did they read the master plan, but they also really paid very close attention to the, and this is in the master plan, but the, the sort of thrust of this town, what it's all about, and so they, you know, really channeled artistic element of the town. So it was a really exciting project. So congratulations for taking it through.
Yeah, thanks for that. Great update. It's now down to me.
It is. It's okay, I still, I still forget what, what it is these days, so I wouldn't have noticed anyways.
All right, so a while back we had, we had, thanks.
Thank you, Danica, Tricia.
We were asked if we accept a grant for refurbishing.
This is such a great idea.
Upstairs piano.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Actually Gretchen, Gretchen was our liaison on the town side for this project. Do you want to talk a little bit about where we are with the piano now?
Yeah, it's actually really expanded the scope that Lisa Servitz has, has tried to solicit a bunch of other folks and other, other organizations to be able to fund separately a sort of a mechanism that will lift the piano once it's back here, from the floor back to the stage and from the stage back to the floor safely.
That'd be great.
And that's, so she's really trying to coordinate that, so.
Yeah. Can I say a few words?
Yeah, please.
Okay, I just, for those of you who may not be familiar with the legacy and history of this piano, Bob McQuillan played this piano for decades and decades, and he was a masterful pianist for contranças in the Mananac region. He played, he was, he was like, he was a Smithsonian artist acknowledged. And he played this piano here in the town hall, he played the Nelson piano for that contranças every Monday for decades. He, he was a jewel and a gem for continuing a really important cultural, unique aspect of this part of the country and the world as it relates to contranças. So it's just so special that we still have his piano. He's no longer with us, but we still have his piano and that we've been able to restore it and appreciate it and use it for contranças going forward, which remains a very vibrant part of our community.
For sure.
I should, anecdotally, Bob had a van that he retrofitted with a piano and a bed. He would tour around the country playing. He was, he was an amazing guy. He was a shop teacher over at the high school.
Yeah.
All right, so we have, we're blessing Bob's.
Yeah, so that, because it is the town's piano, the town has owned this piano since 1918. It was part of the reconstruction of the upper hall, this was one of the pieces that went in originally when the, when this building was, was constructed, as we sit in it now. And so it would be a rededication of the piano to Bob McQuillan, his memory and his legacy. And then the idea is to put his name in the schoolwork on that piece that you see highlighted there, which is called the deck, and that's where the, you know, which holds up the sheet music when someone's playing. So I'll just need a vote to approve.
I'm in compulsion to approve acceptance of the piano with Bob's name on the deck.
All, all's in favor? Great, yeah.
I think that was a great idea.
And so much thanks to Lisa, yes, for taking the charge.
Great, so barn preservation easement came up at a prior meeting, last one I guess, was that, that was?
You weren't here.
You weren't here.
But, and so the request was for, there's the RSA 79E, which is a tax incentive program to restore or renovate old barns that have an agricultural or significant historic interest. And so this is a particular barn on Middle Hancock Road that most of us probably drive by all the time, and it was renovated probably 20 years ago and has been kept up and received this easement, which is a tax abatement basically. And, and so it was up for renewal and we took a field trip out there and I was excited because I had never done this kind of thing, and it's, it's quite spectacular, it's a beautiful barn. So we've now gotten an official word from the Department of Resource Resources of New Hampshire, the state of New Hampshire, that it is eligible for registry and the store, register, store process. So with that, we've filled out this checklist and we're now going to make this vote on its eligibility.
Yeah. Yeah, so just to follow on, so thank you. So we also re-determined that the barn is eligible, and then this really represents, so the percent goes from 25 to 70, 75% as the opportunity to get the abatement, and then the question is how much of that percent does it get? It had 61% the last time. We looked at what our former cycle of members did, we initialed the levels for each category as we saw them at the site visit. We looked at what our former cyclical members did. We initialed the levels for each category as we saw them at the site visit. Um, and as you say, the last remaining question was, was it eligible for being on the register? And you had put it up as eligible and we had put it on initial as not eligible. We didn't know. We didn't know. So, uh, yes, we did. You, uh, so what I want to say is that now that we have the document that shows that it's eligible, Bill and I scratched out our initials and moved it up. So that gives him an opportunity to have a bit more than sixty-one percent, which is what he had the last time. So we just need, so this is now confirmed and we agree. So then someone's just going to need to do the math.
Yep. So Gretchen can take it from there, I think.
Yeah.
Do the math on it.
Yeah.
Uh, figure out what the exemption amount is. Prepare the paperwork and that'll be in your folder.
And then we'll sign.
Yeah.
Now, one of the requests was that this goes on in perpetuity, although the grant is for ten years.
Ten years.
I'm, I'm a ten-year guy.
Oh, yeah.
I'm ten-year.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and to be fair, I mean, they, they, I remember driving by when I was bringing my kid to the well school twenty years ago when they were first fixing that thing up. And, and I've been thinking about it ever since. And then, um, and then the Heritage Commission joined us on the field trip and what's left of it. They need members, if anybody's interested in doing the Heritage Commission, you may get into these little cool barns. And they've maintained it for those twenty years. And, you know, for, and it, and that's the point of it. It's for scenic roads. It's for the rest of the student population, that sort of thing. So, um, and they, you know, they can apply again in ten years when they're still maintaining it or the next generation is. Remember.
Yeah. I mean, I, the reason why I'm aligned with what you said, Bill, is that he's getting older and he will probably pass it on to his family. And we just need to provide the incentive that they maintain it in its beautiful condition.
Exactly. Because it is a great.
It's beautiful.
Great condition.
Yeah.
It's right on the road, so you can see it as you go by.
And that helps, that actually, um, something percent.
Great. Can I ask two questions? Yeah, please. Jared, Chisholm, again, I can. First question, what is the percentage based on? Is it the condition or?
So I can read the categories.
Sure, that'd be great.
So one category is scenic quality of the structure itself.
Okay.
So, um, it's, it's pleasing, you know, they're different levels. So it's pleasing, it's aesthetic, you know? So this gives you an idea of that.
Yeah.
The second one is public access, participation and enjoyment. This is more from a viewing standpoint. So view is from a designated scenic byway, which in this case it is. So he got the highest rating. So just to give you an idea, in the opinion of the select board, selectmen, the structure is, are very scenic, aesthetically pleasing, and the view is unobstructed for a considerable distance along the roadway. That's the highest in that category. That's what we gave.
Okay.
The second one is view from, uh, public access, participation and enjoyment. View is from a designated scenic byway. That was the highest. It's true middle, uh, Middle Hancock is a scenic byway and it's very visible from that highway. So we gave it that top percent. The next one is about, um, uh, historical importance. Um, on a local, regional or national level. So the highest is actually listed on a register. So we didn't give him that because he's not. Um, but the next one down from that is, is either listed or eligible to be listed. And, and so that was our question.
Yeah.
Is, so we asked him, is it eligible? He didn't have. So he had to follow up. And we got a letter from the state, as Todd mentioned. So we got second to the highest on that. Then there's condition of the structure. So this is not aesthetics. This is just how, you know, kind of how robust the structure is, how well it's maintained. It's in beautiful condition. I mean, you're better to evaluate than, than me, but as a group with a historical permission, the opinion was that it is maintained in excellent condition. That's the highest you can go. We all agreed on that. And that's it.
So I guess I have two more questions. Well, it's supposed to be one, but that, you raise the second one. If the condition falls off before, say, if you do the, you decide to go to ten years, are you able to pull the tax abatement early or is there, do those, how, I guess, one of the, what is the process if the conditions aren't, are maintained?
I think that's something we would investigate if that happened, but, you know, don't.
Hopefully it doesn't happen, but just in case, yeah.
We would have to investigate if it were to happen. Like say the next owners decide to tear it down and put a hell of a pan, pad there.
Yeah.
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 That would be.
It's very.
I think I know which one you're talking about. I go, take it over a lot.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's very out there in the clear public view.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a couple down there. I could be.
Yeah.
Jared, it sounds like you might be interested in joining the change.
I already tapped it for the Affordable Housing Committee.
So my last question I had is, um, are there any limitations around either the zoning or the use? I'm sure the, you know, obviously they're the part of a residential property, potentially like a working farm. But say they, they're getting a tax abatement for this. If they decided to go and use this as a, a venue for weddings and stuff like that where there's now more revenue generating property, does that come into play as far as?
It makes it an eligible.
It makes it an eligible.
Okay, good. That's what I'm hoping for. Yeah.
Yeah, it needs to have some connection to agriculture.
Okay, that makes sense. Close open for it.
And this is an, this is an abatement on the improved assessment of it, not, not the base assessment.
Yeah. A full use.
Okay. That makes sense.
Yep.
Perfect.
He mentioned that his daughter has horses. I hope they're moving her horses.
That's great. It's what it meant for.
It seems appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like I said, part of a working farm, fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you're turning it into something.
If you're turning it into something else, it's, it's enough.
Yeah. So if you're driving Middle Hancock Road, it's, it's not too far from where there used to be a lot of free kittens all the time and then well schools. So it's kind of midway between.
Is it the one that has like the kind of tower thing?
No, that's, that's a different one. That's, um.
This is like white, also white.
Okay. I think it's right. I know which one that, yeah.
And it's really.
Like I said, there are a few down there, so I didn't know which one.
Yeah.
All right. All right, thanks. All right, next we have some appointments. We have three committees, including the Community Committee. We have Karen Brown, Mary Goldwage, John Roberts, Sarah Koch. Koch?
Koch.
Koch.
Sorry.
Amanda Allen, Jessica Sullivan, Seth Chatfield. And then the Affordable Housing Committee, we have Amanda Allen.
There's her.
And Jared. And then Dick McNamara is alternate on the constipation commission. Uh, we, we know many of these people, but we always have volunteers wanting to help out the town, so. Let's make a motion.
I will make a motion. I would like to make a motion to accept these appointments of all, for all of these committees. I will sit here.
All right. Go ahead, second.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank, thanks for volunteering.
Thank you.
This is the part of the meeting that you were waiting for.
Yeah, thanks.
That's great, too.
Well, it's a committee, so it's, you know, it's fairly.
It's exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, great. Thanks for sticking around. Uh, now, the minutes from August fifth, I wasn't out there, but have you guys?
September second.
September second, yeah.
I forgot what month it was.
Oh, sorry. I wasn't this one.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
I, August visitor.
Yes.
Right. Maybe if I read them.
I just made a few little adjustments, um, that were very minor, but it was so fine.
Great. That's your motion to approve them with?
Yes.
And I'll second that. You're gonna, you're sticking in this.
Uh, from the fifth, wasn't I?
September. You weren't there.
You were not.
Oh, it says September. It says all.
It's really September.
Now I'm.
Yes.
Okay. So all those in favor?
Yeah.
She confused me there.
That was, that was the one that gave me the opportunity.
Thanks.
You were excellent at it, Bill.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we do, but I'm going to put this nice serene background.
See you, guys. Thanks for, thanks for coming.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Thanks for.
Thanks for your volunteering.
Volunteered.
So school care.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lily.
Yeah.
Is this your fault?
No. No.
I, what can we do about this? This is crazy. Oh, is it Marimac? Is that over a million dollars?
Yeah, London Dairy's two million.
Concorde's two million.
Lebanon's one point three million. Uh, you can go right down the list.
This isn't a scam or a hack.
No, no.
It's bringing everybody.
Unfortunately, it's not. It appears, it appears to be poor financial planning on the heart, on the behalf of the folks that are running, um, the coalition. So it's important first to understand that the school care is not an insurance company. It's a co-op. Um, and so the members are, you know, receive the benefits of the good work of the people who are running the day-to-day operations, but are also on the boat when things go sideways, costs go up, um, unplanned expenditures, whatever sort. Um, it is our understanding that over the last two years, or we've been given an understanding over the last two years, um, their expenses have, have exceeded, um, their expectations. And so they're running in the red, um, or will be running in the red this year. And so because they've had actuarial studies, they have certain requirements that they have to meet by state law in terms of how much of a reserve fund that they have. They have, um, decided to provide, to send out an assessment to every member based on, you know, their, their number of, or was it one and a half percent of?
One and a half times, uh, a, a month's premium.
Which for Peterborough is two hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. Um, we are required to, uh, pay that within the current fiscal year, in fact, before the end of the calendar year. Um, if it's not paid before January first, then we are subject to a zero point five percent interest, um, which I assume is being compounded monthly. Um, the total amount for the second half of the year for that would be over seven.
The exposure to interest would be almost eight thousand dollars if we were to wait and pay it, uh, at the last possible moment, which would be July fifteenth, if we were entered into a.
Yeah.
Agreement to pay. Uh, if we don't enter into an agreement to pay and start making payments, they will stop paying our claims on May first.
Yeah.
Allowed employees' independence use of health insurance.
And we would have to pay directly to Cigna, um, to cover those. Um, in addition, they also informed the communities that we would be looking at a sixteen percent increase on the total cost for this year. So that's all the premiums that we had expected as well as this, uh, contribution assessment. So sixteen percent on top of that for next year, which you had in the math.
Three percent.
Which would be paid by the employees.
Eighty percent by the town, twenty percent by the employees, based on the level of plan that they, that they, um, select for themselves. Um, Lily is already reaching out to other healthcare providers in the state. Um, and so we're looking forward to hopefully some more competitive options that we can bring to you in the future. But for the time being, um, we still have to come up with this money.
Does it have to be in the state provider?
The state, they, they have to be approved to transact business in the state, so.
But they don't have to be just in the state.
They could be Anthem, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, which is nationwide. We currently have Cigna, which is nationwide. So there are options, yeah. National carrier options. Um, we'd be looking to probably, uh, we wouldn't be looking to negotiate directly with Cigna or directly with Anthem, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, or whichever Harvard Pilgrim, because you lose the benefit of having, you know, a certain number of, you know, a larger number of people. So you want to be in a pool. Yeah. So we, we definitely want the benefit of the aggregation, so which is why we're looking at a few different companies as options. Um, our goal, our goal with this is to try to find a way to cover this bill without having a dramatic impact on town operations. Hypothetically, the select board could say, you'll need to take it out of the current operating budget, um, which would have a significant impact on services. There are some, some pockets of money here and there, relatively small dollars that Lily's put together, uh, for consideration, but really the bulk of the money would most likely have to come out of roadway paving. Uh, we do have another option though, which is my preferred option, uh, which is to seek permission from DRA to hold, um, a, an emergency expenditures, uh, public hearing. Um, we've done this in the past a few years ago, which would grant us access to our fund balance. Um, we have one point one million dollars in the fund balance if we are able, and I think we will be able to.
We have two million dollars in the fund balance?
Wait, yeah. But one, one million.
Exactly.
Yeah, one point one million of unrestricted fund balance. So the challenge there is to convince DRA that this is an emergency. I think it qualifies as an emergency.
Yes.
And the money is available, so, you know, why go through, why go through so many, um, you know, hoops, you know, cutting back on governmental, um, operations when the money's there? We just need permission to, to touch it. Um, if they'll allow us to do that, um, then we hold a public hearing under RSA thirty-two eleven. We would hold it here. Yeah. Um, where I would again explain what happened, why it happened, why it's an emergency. Um, the board would then hear from others, including the budget committee, take a vote and then it'd be done.
Right. Can I make one clarifying?
Of course, yes.
We do not get permission from the DRA before the public hearing. We have a public hearing.
And then get permission.
And ask them for permission.
Right, yes.
So they could deny us after you've gone through this process.
We would try to get pre-approval though, or at least.
There's no such thing as pre-approval.
But essentially, yes, if you were to hold a public hearing, we would consider, we would consider.
They are considering it. I've spoken with the DRA, but they have cautioned that, uh, they have final say.
Fair enough. Fair enough. But then what do they use as criteria to say yes or no?
They use, they use section 3211 of the, of the state's law, state law, so municipal budget law, sorry.
But that doesn't say we can't do it.
It doesn't. They hang their hat on something very specific, which is insane, which is have you, will the paying this bill result in you overspending your budget? And we are three months in to our budget, so paying this bill right now would not result. It would, if we continued on the same course as what we planned for all of our department's work, this would overspend the budget, but it would not actually overspend it at this moment. Well, let me, because I, this is where I have, this is where I conflict with the opinion as it was given to you.
Yes.
When I have a, I have a very plain reading of the RSA, which is, "When an unusual circumstance arises throughout the year that, which makes it necessary to expend money in excess of an appropriation, which may result in an over expenditure of the total amount appropriated for all purposes at the meeting at which no appropriation has been made, the selectmen or commissioners, blah, 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 upon application of the commissioner of Department of Revenue Administration, may be given authority to make such expenditure, provided that, one, such application be made prior to making the expenditure." So we can't cut the check, which goes completely against what Kat was saying, but we can't cut the check until after we have taken these steps. No such authority shall be granted until a majority of the budget committee, if any, has approved the application in writing, if there is no budget committee. The commissioner of the Department of Revenue Administration shall, may accept or approve an application after the expenditure if it's caused to be sudden or unexpected emergency, which this doesn't qualify for. Neither, that's education, sorry, also education. So there's, it's the same thing, but it's one's municipal side, one is education side of things. And you have to hold a public hearing. That's it. So it's relatively low hanging fruit. It's not terribly difficult. The cash is already in our account.
Yes.
It's unrestricted.
We don't have a cash flow problem at all.
If for whatever reason we go through this process and DRA says, no, we don't consider it's a qualifying emergency, we do have other options. One of them would be to hold back on, on making any kind of contracts or any plans to use the roadway, repaving the maintenance money, roadway maintenance money, it's on our budget. There is enough money there still to be able to do that. And in the meantime, put together a special warrant article for May, which would ask the voters if we can use $230,000 of unrestricted fund balance to basically make the budget whole within the current fiscal year. If that's approved, then we would be able to release the roadway funds and then, you know.
Or we would have to pay a penalty.
But we would have to pay a penalty, which is why the increased amount, because there would be interest that would be growing.
Yeah.
And then, you know, the third option would be just use the roadway money now, don't wait for a town meeting or any kind of vote.
I think we should have a public meeting. Oh, soon can we have that?
There's a few steps that we have to go through first, so I think later this month though, we should be able to pull some together.
When's the deadline for them to get the money without penalty?
December 31st.
Okay, right.
And ideally, we're not holding a public hearing the same week that we are issuing tax bills.
Right, ideally.
So there is a seven-day, seven-day period for a public hearing.
Yeah, so isn't the 21st a select board meeting?
It's a typical, standard date for a select board meeting. I don't know if I'd be able to pull everything together in time for that, but, because you have to have, it has to be published in the papers a certain number of days in advance to go through all that. But definitely for the first meeting in November.
Yeah, I think that would be comfortable.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Well, I, the way you read it, Nicole, it seems like it should be approval.
I would think so. I think this is the situation, and I imagine that we're not the only community that's going to be asking the DRA this question.
I hear everybody screaming.
Sure not.
Where does that leave us with the fund balance?
That would put us at about 750-ish.
The, right now we have an available fund balance of $2,451,000. We have outstanding taxes of $898,000. So the available unrestricted fund balance, if we were to save all of the money needed to cover the unpaid taxes, is $1,115,000 or $1,160,000. I mean, it's a few dollars short, shy of that.